Plan Commission to Order. Just a reminder, the meeting is recorded and we operate on an agenda basis. Anyone having any business to bring before the committee should do so, we can advance so we can put it on the agenda. Let's see, I guess the first on the agenda is approval of the meeting minutes from last month. Anybody have any corrections or additions? If not, could I get a motion to accept?
Motion to accept the minutes from eight twenty-five.
Dave, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Accepted. Dave, count off days.
Yeah, a couple of things. At the work session the other day, we filled the three open positions on our Ethics Commission. So we put in Nicole Ballard that lives up in Blue Ridge, and Matt Abbott, and Austin Fogarty, who both, I think reside in Attley Ridge.
Okay.
Okay, so all the seats are filled again. As you might have seen, the paving has started around time, so there's a schedule out on the website and I think on Facebook. And if you're going to be impacted by it, they've been putting door hangers around letting you know what time work will be starting and finishing, especially if you have driveways or garages in the alleys where your vehicles need to be moved. The War Memorial Park improvements have been finished up. If you've seen next door, they removed some of the old tripping hazard block and put down new pavers and it looks pretty nice. Let's see, you also may have noticed the bees are gone in the building next door, up in the Cornus area. They had them removed last week, but we had yellow jackets moved in and they had to have an exterminator come in. But I saw today, it looks like it's all put back together, so they sealed it up. So we should be good to go on that. Speaking of that building, we, you know, we're doing the renovations to the building going out. We had contractors that have come in and looked at it, and then we held last week a contractors' meeting. So we had three contractors come in and we had representatives from the town and from the fire department here. And the fire department explained to the contractors the importance of this project and, you know, the impact it could have on them and some of the money that we've got in grants, some of the money we're trying to get in grants, and some of the donations that we received so that they have all that kind of information in their back pocket. They still have another couple of days or maybe another week for questions to submit to the town before the bid process totally kicks off.
Did they give a date or anything for bids?
We have a date for bids. It's, remember, don't know it off the top of my head, it's around the beginning of October. Yeah, the first week of October, I think it is. And we also, those that go to Music on the Main coming up on October 4th, we approved a proposal to replace the sidewalk along Fountain Park, the all the bricks up there that everybody trips on and walks. We're supposed to go ahead and put a sidewalk in there and it's supposed to be done before Music on the Main. We're, we'll see. That'll be something.
Yeah, that's aggressive.
We've got a couple of days of rank coming up, so I'm not holding my breath, but if it happens, that would be great and at least...
The roads look spectacular.
The roads that have been done?
All that have been done with the, once they got the lines on, boy, did that make a difference.
All right, true, I think that's all I wanted to bring up.
Do I have any questions for Dave? Thank you, Dave. Okay, Plan Commission updates. Clara, you're filling in for Javier.
I've got the four. Sure, so we have a series of, I believe it's thirteen maps, that were requested by Mark Schultz. So I think the, did you want me to go over like those or do you want to save that?
I think the biggest concern, Dave, was the growth area boundaries. Do we need to?
So that one, there was the big question about the growth area boundaries. And it looks like, I, Javier had asked Mark a couple of questions. I wasn't sure that they were answered, so I sent him off an email this afternoon to Javier. But it looks like they, everything made it in here, so.
Yeah, there was a little, I think, miscommunication. There was a series of maps that were provided in 2022 that were a little bit older that I think Mark had originally used to ask for changes. But there had since been another series of maps in 2023, so we were just wanting a little bit of clarification to, for him to understand that the 2023 maps are what we'd be updating. So we went ahead and did that. We removed the Snyder property, which included two off conveyances. You can see, along with the removal of that from the growth area, are three small parcels. You'll see little squares. One is within the Snyder property and two of them are within the second off conveyance. Those are town-owned parcels that are, I believe, have to do with water treatment, water system. So because that would create a non-contiguous growth area boundary, we went ahead and removed those as well. That was not in the original direction, but we went ahead and made that change thinking that's the way that you would want to go. So you can, I guess, just looking for confirmation that that is correct. And then on top of that, we added the Hoff property. And those changes should be reflected on all the maps. We did go ahead and make a couple of changes associated with the growth area boundary change. One of that is, let's see, or one of those, the fourth map, New Windsor zoning designations. There is, in the legend, there's an area for existing county zoning within the growth area boundary. So we added the Hoff property to that, which is agriculture, and we removed the Snyder properties from that. Another change is the future annexation area. Again, added the Hoff, removed the Snyder. And then, I think those were the majority of the changes. There are a couple areas of cleanup that we will need to do. These maps were put together fairly quickly, so. And then obviously, as you all review them, you know, any cosmetic things you want to make changes to, we can certainly do that as well, so. And, you know, we're willing to take feedback through email, over the phone, or if there's some larger changes we want to make, maybe sit down and meet with you all and we can make those changes in person just to make sure they're reflected accurately.
Okay, okay, appreciate that. Okay. This, Mark had a question about this, Kier County's, I guess, the transportation, this pre-tour meeting. Originally, I think the invite went out to, I think, the Plan Commission, from my understanding. Is that just, and then I think he retracted and said it was just the county staff?
Yeah, that's more of a staff level meeting. So what happens is MDOT releases their draft consolidated transportation plan every year around this time. So town staff, county staff, and MDOT staff will meet virtually next Monday to kind of discuss any issues or any questions that we have. And then, I believe in October, the elected officials, the Secretary of Transportation, county commissioners all meet and discuss those as well. I think we did note that it looks like in the draft CTP that was released about two weeks ago, the Maryland Thirty-One Streetscape is fully funded, which this is the first year that that has happened. So just a little bit of, if this is, if this is to go through into the final CTP, from MDOT staff, I've heard that the project would be advertised around December 2026. And then looking for completed construction during the winter of 2029, 2030, so, yeah.
I saw the fiscal year budget 2027. I guess funding will be put in then. I'd brought it up on, I went on the State Highway Administration project, so.
Yeah, so this is for FY...
Okay. Okay, what I have, it just said sidewalk improvements from Lampert to Church. So that, is that the whole streetscape or is that just a part of that project?
Yeah, so it's under a couple of different names, but the sidewalk improvement was the project for a while. That's what it was called, but then they incorporated, I think, our whole entire streetscape fits in there along with it.
Yeah, and what they have, it just says sidewalk improvements, okay.
Yeah, I believe it's the full, like, the full streetscape, but you can also direct staff to, those questions can be answered next Monday at the pre-tour meeting, so. MDOT staff would likely have more information than I do.
And I'm sure, the town staff as well, where the scope of the project, so.
And we meet, we meet with the whole project team monthly on that to go over it. Other than the 2930, the, maybe they never pushed out that timeframe, but those dates all sound.
Oh, okay. Okay, anybody have any questions for Clara or the county level, Dave?
No, I'm assuming that we're probably gonna have to have a meeting that we go over these, the maps in detail to make sure that they've captured everything that we've been marking up for the last couple of years.
The last half decade.
But the main thing was, of course, to get, make sure our growth area boundary was correct. Because, you know, the process that, once we finish up with this, we're going to be presenting it to the town council and they, you know, are the ones that get the, they can tell, send it back and say, no, we don't like that. So, but we need to make sure that we have it the way we want it at the time.
Okay, thank you, Clara. Okay, nothing else. I guess we'll move on to the comprehensive plan review.
Clara, I don't know if you want to stay or not stay, or if you have any questions for us that we can, you know, answer before. You're more than welcome to stay, but we're gonna jump back into the comprehensive plan review.
Yeah, I'm gonna hang out for a little while.
Okay.
Thank you, though.
So are you gonna drive?
I can attempt.
Yep.
Good luck, by the way.
Yeah.
Am I in the wrong spot? Do I need to get out of your way?
You're good, you can be, you, you're you on? You can be my wee man.
I'll be here.
Are you?
I don't admit to having any technical knowledge, because that would get me in trouble, but I do sell IT, so.
Oh, okay, well then now you...
I do have some knowledge.
Okay.
But not really for setting up other people's computers, just making mine work.
You're gonna need your password, Dave.
Even more than that. Blue one, two, three. Come on, okay, make it one, two, four, just to throw people off. What do we need to do? He did something.
He came in early and handled it all set up.
Yeah.
There you go, it's on PC.
Well.
Were you, you choosing from down the bottom, I'm guessing?
Well, it seemed like there was something else I did. Oh, there we go.
Software.
That's the update, but it should.
And then you should be able to scroll on the bottom. Scroll on that bottom if there's an arrow. Hold on. Yeah, see if you can.
It came, it was a, it came up. Wanted to know, creating access.
Can you go to the word that says PC? Can you go up one?
Yeah, I have gone.
There you go, and hit that and see if it takes it, enter.
Well, that wasn't.
That's not it.
See, that, that, we have a travel pictures, but we had a number of the.
Oh, so it should be.
Dave did something and it came.
If you don't touch anything down.
I'm not touching anything. I know better than that.
Yeah, we had this.
Because of the fact that I sell IT, I knew I don't touch anything or I get in big trouble.
I call tech.
I mean, are you good typing stuff?
No, I'm horrible.
Yeah, we had it, it was, because it came.
This Dell?
It turned on this Dell device right here. Yeah, it came up and asked for permission. Because that, does this need to be turned on? I think it is. I don't, I mean, because there's a button, I don't know. Yeah, it was, okay. Screen sharing to your TV, okay, here we go.
You are a tech wizard, look at that. Looking for part-time work?
Okay. Okay, now the. Physical implications was, did we, I think that's where we stopped at. Year notes, did Dave, did?
Yeah, my notes are not.
Oh, okay. It has on here that Mark has that we, we're. Went to physical implications.
Yeah, that's what I was written down, I wasn't here last time, unfortunately, because of work.
Okay. Well, that physically, that's per paragraph.
Okay.
Continue joint agreement with Board of Education for the school. So now, does anybody know for sure?
Whether they still have that joint agreement?
Whether they still have? See, I don't know what, whether Springdale Prep is.
I don't believe Springdale has purchased the property yet.
No.
Based on anybody I've talked to. So.
Do we, I guess, keep that in there and?
Because they still play rugby on the property and stuff like that, so I'm gonna say it's still in place.
Continue joint agreements as well, no physical impact, so I guess that would stay. Tie. Anybody, on the latest, it was page fifty is where we are, Dave. Glenn, are you?
What'd you say, seventy?
Fifty, yeah. Yeah, it's, we're down to the physical implications, chapter eight.
Yeah.
We're, oh, okay.
You figured out where we are?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
I'm gonna grab my overalls and walk out.
Oh, okay. Think all the. Gets back here.
See, I don't know about the CIP projects. That was based on, I think, them purchasing the old school, number three, is that why that was even in there?
Either that or any land acquisition for future well sites or? Oh, for two, yeah, I don't know what.
Yeah.
It just says no physical impact.
Yeah, and there it goes, where you don't have anything going on.
Yeah. And five sites for.
Now, the community park and the linear park were already done, weren't they? Our community park, wasn't that the new park? So that could come out, I would think.
Well, no, the linear park, they're talking about, you know, the trails and.
Oh, that's still there, okay. Okay.
And then, and I don't know where the decommissioned lagoon area.
Okay.
Is that gonna be? I know at one time they were talking about.
Well, they were gonna run something alongside the train tracks, right?
Yes, that, where the old lagoons.
Yeah.
They had some students from, like, planning or, didn't they have some University of Maryland?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I've got notes and stuff, Dave, but I don't know from which meeting.
We were on number four, evaluate the.
The town, oh, the town-county agreements, ensure.
That's for.
I mean, that would, that'll stay in place, that is a.
Correct. Yes.
That's, that's an annual, I can sign off for. And that's right, no physical impact for us, correct? Do you want that a little larger?
Let's go back up to the heading of those numbers, please.
I'm showing you halfway down page fifty-one, if your pages are numbered.
Well, I have, I have this number four where I left off that we were under recommended actions.
Okay, let's see, we're about to.
I had that on page.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, because I've got stuff scribbled down, but I'm just going by what Mark wrote down for the.
So I had us here on this number four. Jay, Gene, is that, is that where you, excuse me, is that where you left us left up?
I, yeah, I believe so.
Oh, I gotta wait and update the town-county agreement to ensure.
Yeah. This is where I had us left.
Oh, okay. Okay, you'd now like that last paragraph or the second paragraph. Tower is going to become less effective in areas over recent years.
Yeah, so I'm not sure about that whole number four. It looks like someone was pontificating.
Let's say, is it something that does not to be, doesn't need to be that?
Well, the town, in my opinion, the town-county agreement is actually very good thing. They work very well together, put that in it, in its both parties benefit. So I don't necessarily agree with whoever wrote all that stuff. Definitely they've been different, but it's not the way it works now.
I mean, yeah, I don't see why we need to discuss why the relationship worked well and ensures an open exchange. I don't think that's necessary.
I mean, the town staff, Gary and the town staff spent a large amount of time ensuring that we, and will continue to do that, in order that the agreement is in the benefit of the town and the county.
The second paragraph needs to go right away. Almost the whole thing?
I don't think we need the history of it, right?
Okay.
Just say the, to start with, the county commissioners and town.
Annually enter into an agreement to share funds and coordinate planning and other governmental functions.
That first, that first paragraph, this is.
I mean, it's wordy, but.
Yeah, I mean, it's fine, and you can kill the second one for sure.
Yeah. The however.
And the, and the.
That one?
And the, and the last one as well, I don't, we're talking about specific elements. It, you know, there's a lot of elements in there. I think we can just put something along the lines that the town of New Windsor will continue to work with the county to mature.
Specific element, which may be a.
Yeah, let's get rid of that.
Yeah, paragraph also.
The last paragraph goes as well.
Do we want to?
I would put the, the town of New Windsor will continue to work with county to mature a.
Yeah.
Agreement in place.
What do you, how do you want to say it?
The town of New Windsor.
Continue.
Will continue to work. I may type better than you.
Okay.
I'll try. I'm not good, but I'm, you are a little slower than me.
Yeah, I've got the.
So I'm not gonna pick on you for that.
No, no, don't. I'm a, I'm a hot and pack.
I'm gonna take that sticker and get it out of the way, okay, we're gonna go back, okay.
I'm good at deleting things.
I mean, you can do whatever you want as far as, like, if you want to make it bold, you can do whatever, so that Mark can see what we changed.
Yeah.
And I'm just gonna, you can leave the stick out like that's fine, you will see it, and you can massage.
I'm a horrible typer. Well, the town of New, I've got a new space there.
Town of New Windsor.
Continue to work with the commission. To.
I actually am looking at it on my thing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Commissioners to, uh, continue to provide.
Guidance support. Guidance under the town-county agreement.
Um, I'd have to look at a map to see exactly which one that is.
Up here. It really supposedly worked well, has a result, many issues, I don't know whether we need all this.
Okay. Yeah, so that originated in a nineteen nineties Greenway plan. I think it was brought forward and recognized in the most recent Bike Ped Master Plan for the county. So that, that is in the Bike Ped Plan, I think.
So that's like, that's why we have, we know.
Air, air plan is in chaos, you know.
Well, yeah, that's what I'm almost thinking.
It is there, it in no way has any bit of funding associated with it, design, anything like that.
Finally to the town of New Windsor, well, no. Do you want Commissioner or do you want to put county? Do we want to get rid of above this where I have that cursor? Do we want to get rid of this cooperative relationship has worked well? I mean, again, we're pontificating, I don't know whether we.
Yeah, I mean, it makes it sound like we've had quite a number of issues. Yeah, I mean, it makes it sound like we've had quite a number of issues we've had to resolve.
I always think about getting rid of that.
That's, that's fine, that's not certain any purpose for, and, and as Glenn said, he should put the county and that stuff, you not the commissioners, the county.
Oh, the county, okay.
Yeah, okay. And he was saying about keeping in the county commissioners also distribute funds annually to the town.
Capitalize that.
Capital, capital county.
Okay, okay. We have this stuff about the linear park.
Yeah, we capitalized county that he just.
Oh, leave a cap, okay.
And they distribute the, uh, road, road funds from state, correct? That's how that goes to the county, and then the county distributes amongst the municipalities, correct?
That's a whole, that's a whole separate.
That's separate, then, okay. I didn't know that was covered under this town and county agreement or not. Okay, everybody kinda.
Did we create the Tibbetts Lane Park yet, or no? We haven't, have we?
No, when I was talking to Claire, why you guys are doing that, the, the Little Pipe Creek Trail proposed from Union Bridge to New Windsor is. Still on the books, not funded, but it's still on the books.
Books, yeah.
So, we need to put words in there that we would still sort.
Support that, most definitely, I think it is, isn't that the Little Pipe Creek Trail?
Yes, so that's our portion of it up there from the town that would connect over, so we still support that, but. Again, we have not thrown any funding at it or anything like that, I mean, we would not do that until, you know, that project became. You know, high on the county's list to start funding.
Okay.
So do we wanna leave that exactly how we have it? Oops, sorry. So is that what's considered the Little Pipe Creek Rural Legacy Area? Is that different than? Oh, this is just, okay, over here at the.
Yeah.
Over here in Atlee Ridge, okay, yeah.
And I think we did, there is something here about money, I think. Or maybe not, maybe they removed, removed that, okay, we removed that, good. So we're gonna leave that the same then?
Do we, has the town on the, the Snyder's proposition? On the walking trail down it, uh.
Yeah, that's a whole separate.
Should any, should that be added in?
Cause that's a whole nother agreement that has not.
That has not been finalized.
No, not wouldn't even, that phase of the Snyder's project would not even be discussed until. The comprehensive plan was approved and his properties were taken out of the gap.
Okay.
When that happens, it would enter into the next phase, because he wants to donate to the county, until that happens, that's not.
Okay. Fiscal implications.
Which the first paragraph is.
So are we gonna leave all those fiscal implications alone?
Should, uh. Like the joint, the agreement with the Board of Education School, should we put anything in there, a blurb, or any future? Ownership or tenant, or?
Hasn't changed yet.
You're, you're talking about the school?
The school, the, the fields. I mean, right now, if, like, the rec councils, do they contact Kirk County Board of Education, then they? Or they contact Springdale Prep?
I think they work with Springdale Prep, because they have the.
Yeah, okay. And there's no formal, we have no, the town has no formal agreement with, with those fields.
No.
So I guess just let that as it stands?
Oh, this is where they talk about the price of the park.
Okay.
Here, and I think that.
That, I think that information.
The twenty twenty-four estimate, never mind.
Oh, okay.
I didn't realize we had updated that.
I think Mark had.
Got that put in there, okay. Okay. Chapter nine. Yee-haw! So exciting, so exciting.
Chapter nine, natural and agricultural resources, go preserve and make wise use of environmental resources.
Nineteen ninety, oh, twenty-ten.
What's that?
I, I was like, I was reading what I had written down ninety-seven, and I didn't look here, and I went, no, we already updated it to twenty-ten. I wouldn't think that changes.
Has anything been updated since on? This, uh, the environmental resource element? Since ninety-seven?
Well, we're gonna actually, I guess we would say this element of the comprehensive plan was adopted to the twenty-ten amended plan. Not concurrent, but to it, since we're now giving a new plan, or do we even wanna mention when it was adopted? It looks like we're saying the same thing multiple times.
Yeah.
I mean, it almost like that first sentence, and then you get rid of this element was adopted concurrent, yeah, that doesn't really need to be in there.
So the information I have is recommended.
Yeah.
Contains chapter satisfied state requirements for sensitive areas.
Possibly remove.
See, I don't know what.
Remove that? Not removing anything, I'm just letting you look at, oh, I went away. I am thinking I'm being so sly. Trying to remove that area, maybe?
Okay, this hasn't, I mean, from the twenty-ten has been changed quite a.
Yeah.
Quite a bit. Well, they added in the, like, a glossary, well, no, that still had it in.
It looks to me pretty much everything in the environmental resource is detail that we probably can't get rid of.
That's what I'm thinking, it's, it's, it's not our, it's not our words.
No, 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 but I'm thinking that first paragraph might be able to be shortened a little bit if we even care to. But the mineral uses, that's pretty much all. Most of this stuff looks like it's specific. We do have some numbers to change in the agricultural side.
I mean, we just keep that in, cause it said that this element has been adopted concurrent to nineteen, so it's continued, yeah, I mean. I guess it just says that that's when we adopted the.
Okay.
And I guess that was the first update since nineteen ninety-two.
Do we touch anything in the mineral resources side, or that pretty much? Hey, just a question, under habitats of threatened endangered species, it says faunal community, F A U N A L. What is that?
Let's see, where's?
Co, it's co-mor is a regulation. Um, I, I, I don't know what it stands for, but it's some type of.
Oh, I guess faunal is like the vegetation, no, that's flora, faunal.
No, this.
Flor, uh, faunal would be animals, correct? Cause flora and fauna.
Everything else suggests all the vegetation, all of that, and then it says faunal.
Well, that, I think my understanding would be like frogs and turtles and.
Bog turtles.
Yeah, the. Bog turtle, when they did the bypass of Hamstead, they had put that, built the bridge for the bog turtles. So I, I imagine that's what they're referring to there.
A faunal community is a group of animal species, or a specific faunal assemblage. Living and interacting within a particular region or habitat over a specific time period. Thank you, AI. And that's whether it's true or not, I don't know, but that's what AI is telling me. I always have to be careful, cause AI does make things up, uh, not, unlike me, I never make anything up.
Just remember, as we're going through this, this is the second time.
I noticed.
Yeah, I know.
Making sure that we didn't miss anything.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
I agree.
So, yeah, we have reviewed all this.
So we left this.
Pretty, pretty much intact, yes.
Yeah.
We'd like to change.
Oh, okay, uh, the only thing I see, and I looked up some, on the agricultural resources.
Okay, so go through minerals, get agriculture.
They have the information for twenty.
Yeah, we have a big yellow area.
Twenty oh-two, and I went on the county's. And the most recent they had was twenty twenty-two, which is still ten years.
No, no, twenty, twenty-two would be three years, you mean twenty?
No, it was two thousand two.
Okay.
So I did find on the county's website, agricultural for twenty twenty-two, I don't know whether you want, it's quite a.
Yeah, this is where he was hoping Emily was gonna get updated numbers.
Okay, where did, shoot, where did I write it? I'm looking at my notes. Oh, okay, uh. The sources, Kirk County government website from the USDA for twenty twenty-two. Kirk County total worth of agricultural products sold by farms in Carroll County would be around sixty-eight million nine. In twenty twenty-two, it was a hundred and thirty-eight and a point five million.
Okay.
So I don't know, and I don't know whether you need to.
That somewhere, I didn't, where's that?
Isn't it on a chart?
Uh, it's agricultural reasons, it's one, two, three, look in the, the third paragraph. I don't know how it is in.
Thirty acres. Oh, okay, yeah, sixty-eight million, what is it now?
Um, from, this is.
Two thousand.
Twenty-four?
Uh, two thousand twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-two.
And I don't know whether that's, this is.
And to be around.
It said market value was one hundred and thirty-eight million five hundred thousand.
Five hundred.
And.
How many acres of farmland?
Well, it said, uh, it's, they just rounded it off to a hundred and thirty thousand.
Oh, we, we have a hundred and forty-seven thousand.
That's what, yes, but, uh, since then, I guess it has decreased.
Okay, so I'll move it, make it a hundred and thirty?
And that's, yeah, that was from USDA website, and so the county's website.
So, does this chapter review, um, drinking water, wastewater, and stormwater?
In this chapter?
Yeah. Is that a different chapter?
That was earlier, what?
Okay.
Yeah, you would.
Natural agricultural.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, water is a natural resource, you know, but, but it's, yeah, yeah, it's not.
Yeah, I'm scrolling through the plan on my phone, going back and forth to the table of contents of the chapter. Um, I just wanted to make sure you all had the latest, um, county updates of the W R E, the Water Resources Element. I think that was presented to you all, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, that sounds right. Okay, good.
I'll modify that number to two thousand sixty per acre.
You guys all okay with what I found off the website for those, the?
I kinda wish all this information really wasn't in here, because it's outdated soon as.
Yeah, it's, it's like right now, it's outdated. Or do you, do you think that's evidently, we thought it was?
Yeah, it was at the time, I guess someone thought it was worth putting it in, and, and, I mean, it's interesting information. I, I would have rather had a pointer to somewhere we can get accurate information, but I'm not sure the pointer would stay accurate, so.
Uh, could say, see, Carroll County, Carroll County government website is where I.
We couldn't put a, the most accurate figures can be found on, I, I don't know, we don't have that anywhere.
Yeah, and I mean, and I wrote.
That anywhere else.
Yeah.
What about this next paragraph? Cause we're not really giving the worth of agricultural products, cause we didn't have.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's, yeah, and that was the.
And it took that away.
Yeah, no, that, that figure's there at the end, but did you try to come up with?
I looked it up, there's no way I'm gonna be able to make that number up, so I just removed it.
See, I don't know why that, that.
Does this last paragraph even need to be in here, that? So the public benefit, that can be derived from soil and water.
So, but I mean, this last figure, this a hundred and fifteen thousand, one twenty-eight per, per year, if that, that was based on those.
Other numbers.
There, I don't know whether that's.
Well, it can't be, that's why I removed.
Yeah.
I took it out. I removed it from up there, just because I, I, I did, I took a hundred and thirty-eight divided with a hundred and thirty thousand to raise that price up to a thousand sixty.
It doesn't, yeah.
But I can't do. But I can't do the next one, I don't know how we got that number. I don't know how we came up with that, that number that was in there, so.
Which number again are you looking for?
Hundred and fifteen thousand.
I pulled it off already, it would be the, uh.
It's the hundred and fifteen thousand per year.
Yeah, how many, what per acre is generated?
Yeah.
Okay.
Whether that's really.
I don't think it's really relevant that we have to say.
It says it's based on agricultural census.
Yeah, I mean, with market fluctuations, it changes from, and yield, there's so many, there is.
I guess maybe if we did a hundred and thirty thousand times ten sixty, that would be the number, but.
I'm not sure everybody's comfortable reading.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah.
They're not.
They're gonna Google, they're gonna Google it.
Ask AI, ask AI, okay.
Analyst of community needs. This one, this one sentence is kinda, seems kinda contradicted. So there are numerous permanent agricultural easements and agricultural districts, essentially temporary preservation agreements surrounding, it kinda seems like it contradicts itself.
How if they're permanent, are they essentially temporary?
And it's right, it says however a large amount of unprotected land still remains.
And that's not true, because we just added it in, right?
Not within, yeah, I mean.
So maybe we change that to say there are numerous permanent, permanent agricultural easements and agricultural districts surrounding the town and environs?
Evidently, we've, whenever this wants, evidently it.
Okay.
Something wrong with that.
Yeah.
Something's not right on that. Temporary preservation agreements, something's.
Let me see, yeah. If they're permanent, they can't be temporary.
Did the original plan say that?
Well, that's what I'm.
Okay.
Small.
Yes.
Farmland easements, whether they're donated, not as president of Carroll County Land Trust, you know, donated easements, they were permanent.
Yeah.
And the Maryland back, now, just they call it, that's permanent.
Yeah.
I can't even figure out what this one is. Temporary preservation.
It says that, it said that in the original one, too.
Yeah. I guess I can understand it's because they could change, but they could, can they change, can they like pull them away?
What easements?
Yeah, they can.
We, we dealt with property owners and they were told that easement is permanent.
Yeah.
You, Dave, you said in the early, they were donated, this, these.
Yeah, well, you donate a male easement, you, it's purchased easement, the state pays.
Oh, the state.
Oh, okay, oh, okay.
Development rights extinguished. But, but the Carroll County Land Trust, and I was president of that for, I don't know, ten years, twelve years, but anyway, it's a donated easement, which means that you do get tax advantages since it's donated.
Okay.
You've donated something, then it's evaluated, and then the IRS will, you know, will give you a tax.
I was like, no, I saw that go, I saw that go, and I was like, what?
I'm not sure what they're referring.
So do we, do we wanna leave it then?
Remove it.
Well, if we, we let there for the next, for the next Congress.
Review to scratch your head about.
Next annual review.
Yeah.
Okay.
If you took those four words out of there, essentially temporary preservation agreement, if you just remove those.
Yeah, it's not gonna.
It still says there are numerous permanent agricultural easements and agricultural conditions surrounding the town and then.
I, I, it says the same thing.
Same thing, we don't need the.
I didn't think so either.
Maybe just take out essentially temporary and just say agricultural districts, preservation, well, there are numerous permanent agricultural easements.
Agricultural districts surrounding the town and environs. I think that's what we should deal with. There we go, done.
Does the temporary easement thing, was that like a revertible easement that gets put, that gets taken away while, you know, you're doing something and you need a temporary easement, and then after it's final, then the easement is reverted back? Is that what they mean by temporary?
Would that apply to agricultural land? That's what this is referring to here.
I'd say I agree, there is what you're talking about.
There is, there is.
But it's basically.
They call it revertible.
Agricultural stuff, but for county, if you want, I don't think there's.
Yeah, I'm not aware of any temporary agricultural easements.
There we go.
Strike it from the book, no one will ever.
I did, I've done it, it's done.
Per player.
I don't know, Kevin was keyboard, keyboard crazy that night, I don't know what happened. Okay, carbonated rock is such an exciting topic.
Well, that, that abundance of water also was, I don't know whether we, you know, for the watershed. And looking at some of the maps, it's essentially the whole, uh, wave, or, um, Little Pipe Creek watershed is underlay.
That information's still accurate. Uh, we just went through it last summer a little bit when we were producing, looking for water.
Okay. Okay, we want to continue to support.
Yeah, I would think we would wanna continue to support that.
Yes.
Number one, keep number one.
Okay, we wanna work with the county, of course we do. Now, is HB eleven forty-one still our? Is that right?
I.
House Bill eleven forty-one.
That was in the old, so I'm assuming that. I'm assuming that probably has not changed.
Okay.
Are you too?
The very nature of the growth area contradicts.
What's that? Some spelling bee words in this.
Oh, the storativity?
Yeah.
I, I, that one came up as not, but I don't know what storativity is, and I'm not gonna argue with it.
Ability to store water.
Okay, storativity. Are you going too fast?
Okay, Mark put in the due stuff up there.
Yeah, it looks like he put. About twelve thirty-one, twenty-five, yeah. On number two. Number three looks.
I didn't see the House Bill eleven forty-one in the information the county provided on.
Oh, that, what?
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't know whether, is that.
So do we wanna just say, not specifically mention House Bill, but say, uh.
I'm trying to find it as well for you.
In the, the twenty-ten, I mean, it has the House Bill, maybe just say legislation requires, state legislation requires that all county and municipal.
That would be another way, I can't, I just don't see that number.
And I can't see anybody going to. Maybe say just state legislation requires all county. And, and do we need to put it at October first, two thousand, because that's, that is a yearly, isn't it, Claire?
I'm sorry.
The Water Resources Element, that's a yearly. Uh, yearly.
Update?
Yeah.
No, I believe that's being updated now in coordination with the county's master plan. So I believe it's just an element that has to be included in your master or comprehensive plan. And I am not positive how often it has to be updated besides every ten years, but I can check on that for you.
Okay, I mean, they had October first, two thousand nine, I mean, I don't know whether, does that kinda date this?
That's what I was wondering.
Dates this plan by.
So instead of saying in two thousand nine, why don't we just say the county requires?
For the, I think she said the state every ten years. Which would be in line with the comprehensive.
Should be in line with the comprehensive review.
That's correct, eleven forty-one is still correct.
And you say that is a ten-year?
Yeah, I don't think it's yearly or anything, because this says that municipalities have to adopt it by this date.
Yeah, that's the date.
We have adopted.
That was maybe the original, you?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. Do we wanna remove the date and just say HB forty-one requires?
Because imagine when that was put in, they were working on the, the twenty-ten.
Yeah. That's why I'm just thinking we just say HB eleven forty, you know, remove in twen, two thousand nine, just say HB eleven forty-one requires that all county municipal governments and the state.
Yeah, I think that's what originally was there, I think, we didn't have two thousand nine there.
Uh, yeah.
HB one forty-one. Requires that all county. State adopting water use or something.
The rest of that, that final paragraph, it's all good.
Okay. Okay. Number three.
Okay, so this writing, as this writing, there's no guidelines for a plan for a green belt?
Do we have any plans for a green belt? I don't think we do. Do we?
See, that was all in, uh, in the twenty-ten. I had number three, I have that as.
Get rid of it.
That's what I had in mind, but I evidently, we, it evidently has to be, you know, we kept it. Because it's in this, this.
This one.
I've read in, uh, in Frederick County, I know they have, I've read about. Mentioned this, with projects on there, mentioning this, the green belt. And I don't know whether that's like a, instead of being abrupt, kind of more or less the feather out the development or. We kept the, I had it Xed out, but yet it's, it's, it's in what?
You had it Xed on in which verse?
The, the twenty-ten. I had an X in it, but evidently, it was, I imagine it has to be in for the state requirements, I would think. Do you know, Claire, at the county level, was any like green belt, you heard that terminology or anything for?
I am not sure what that means.
What's a green belt?
I don't.
Green belt.
Whenever, whenever we do a development.
Like a buffer.
Specifically tree save areas and.
Yeah, I had that marked, it's gone as well.
And.
Make a green belt around.
No, it's, it's specific.
Yeah, I'd say, you, you're, with your developments, is there any, Glenn, any?
I'm not familiar with the green belt either, but I was just saying to Dave that when we develop a property, there's specific tree save areas where you stay, stay out of and everything, and then there's reforestation for every amount that you take out, you have to replan or put it in a forest bankment or anything like that, so.
And in the, the two thousand ten, it talked about, it's just, that was something that was in the, the works, but, and I'll see it's been kept in.
Did you have your?
I had it marked as gone as well, with nothing, there was not a paragraph there, so the fact that there's a paragraph there.
I think you leave it, you leave it.
I think it's no harm in leaving that.
Yeah.
I think you leave it, yeah.
They do come up with some guidelines we're willing to follow.
Yep.
Yep, okay.
I don't think we need to put a blurb about that in it though, do we?
Yeah.
Well, it does say therefore the town should, yeah, when guidelines are available, so, that covers that.
Yep.
Uh, work with the county to draft and adopt design guidelines for minors.
So I have written there that design guidelines have been adopted by the town, continue to enforce them and update them as necessary.
So do you wanna take that out and just put that in there, or?
That's what I was, that's what I had replaced that paragraph with.
I like, I think this is very wordy, we don't need all this.
Yeah, I'm, I don't, I don't remember what.
I'm gonna have you repeat and I'll type.
Design guidelines have been adopted by the town.
Adopted by the town. Because it's the town.
Continue to enforce them and update them as necessary.
No, it didn't move, I, you saw where I was. Continue to update and enforce. These guidelines. That's why the town and will be continuing and. Continue to be updated. Forced. How's that, is that okay? Oh, okay. And enforced, duh. Yep, there we go, okay. Fiscal impact. There could be no fiscal impact, okay.
Yeah, they all, to me, that looks all.
Chapter ten. We're rocking.
Chapter ten.
I remember chapter ten. Now, wait a minute.
My newt says, well, that didn't happen.
Our goals. Why don't we, should we just say increase the commercial and industrial tax base and leave out any percentages or dates? Kevin, I have your famous line up here, from the first one, it says, instead of increase the commercial and industrial tax base by fifty percent by the year twenty twenty. It says increase the commercial and tax base by utilizing and enhancing all available areas, remember you said that?
I don't remember, but it sounds like I, I, some, something I would try to put together, because.
Yeah.
So by utili-, I'll change it then, I'll change it. By utilizing. And enhancing all available areas. Instead of fifty percent by a certain date. Exactly, it's like. It's like when my boss says, I need a budget for next year, and I said, well, do you want to tell me what you want me, or do you want it, want me to tell you what I know I can do? And no matter what you give them, they change it, and I just go, here you go. Here's a number.
But now, by enhancing. Are you kind of more to say, well, the town should run water and sewer out to that? To enhance?
No, we're not saying that.
No.
Enhance, we could enhance multiple ways. It just, it just, our goal is to enhance the property, if it come, if it means money has to come out of our pocket, that may not happen, but that doesn't mean we wouldn't entertain it.
But it also means we could.
Yeah.
If we wanted to.
Wanted to.
Yeah.
Water down into the light industrial area more than we already have. We have to have ability to enhance those areas.
Yeah, okay, okay. Better than putting their twenty thirty.
No, I'm not putting any dates in, I don't want to be associated with any, with any percentage or date goals, because there's no way you could win. Okay, I'm thinking that all, all those two paragraphs are pretty good.
I assume the county's economic development has that, there's parcels in their inventory that they present to.
I would have no idea what the county knows about our lay, I would think if we have it registered as such, it should be designated as such. Yeah, as a Realtor, your properties designate, every property has a designation of what it is. Most definitely. Okay. Okay, current conditions.
His businesses names are all around now.
I was gonna say, it's not, you, is it New Windsor Forest Products now, right?
Uh, no, it's still Universal.
Oh.
U F, well, it's, it's U F P.
Universal Forests and Pride.
Still called Universal, or is it just called U F P, do they?
Uh, well, when you see all the things, it says U F P, but it, that means Universal Forest Products.
U I D C.
Is now Hoover's.
Earth Woods also gone, Hoover's. And I think that's.
That is now.
Turbo XS.
It's, well, now it's Garage Line.
Garage Line?
Yeah, I went on their website.
Garage Line, two words?
Yes, and they more or less make wheel adapters for the small switchcars.
Okay.
Garage Mine, L I N E.
Yes. And that's what comes up on Google Maps also.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, I went on.
Do we want, so, what about the solar farms we have, are they on town property, should we identify them?
No, that's not.
I didn't know, I was only, okay.
Yeah, I don't even think that's in the, the campus, uh, employment campus either, but now we're mid Atlantic.
You told me.
That's not it.
No, when they did all those um, solar farms, you know, that was just provided to us for, you know, just to, just to review.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Oh. This was updated. Belisa Moses spell wrong, it looks like.
Back to the, those words.
B E L I S A M O S?
S A, okay.
New Windsor Carryout is New Windsor Liquors. Well, see, I don't know if, those ones are still on, are they still?
He's a, um, a.
Oh, oh, you mean current conditions?
This?
Yes. Hoover's. Now, current industrial operations within the town. Now, I'm asked, or would they be considered a commercial for industrial operations down the alley? That makes controls for like, uh, water treatment and stuff?
Yeah, I don't think they're considered.
Uh, industrial. And then the, their old cooling station, that's a, like a floor finishing. Should we change where it says contain, uh, Springdale Avenue, contain the Brother and Service, should we change that to Springdale Prep Campus?
It's not in there, you're reading what's not up there. What's in your?
Oh, the current conditions?
Yeah, it's not up there, I'll show you. Yeah.
Well, the paragraph is not?
Yeah, that last paragraph isn't there anymore.
Employment campus zone, zoning currently exists in two areas along the west side of Maryland Route thirty one across from Tippett's Lane. Currently a home-based commercial and.
Living operation and at the intersection of Maryland thirty one and Springdale Avenue containing the Springdale Preparatory School Campus.
Okay, so that has been.
We updated that, yeah.
We don't say the warehouse down there is.
That's in, well, serve is in part of it. But I think, I don't know whether they're gonna lease out. I don't know what the.
I know something's changing there, but I don't know what.
Ed probably could fill us in more on that, but I don't know.
We're probably okay, just leaving it like this, alright.
Tables at table fourteen. Are the tables renamed?
B C Moses Restaurant Day.
So that stuff you have on mine in there, that's Mark's already taken the staff. It's totally different than what we got in our line.
Yeah, yeah.
Barber's.
Yeah, he, and that information comes from the town's website, I think it's a note.
Okay, well, that's good then.
On this one, it says Carroll County Plan Department, I think if you scroll down what it says, but like, the Halco Meet, so they're out.
Yeah. Not within.
They're not, not even within.
Hey, can we go back one, two, the little chart?
Go back to where?
Go back to the last page.
That?
Yeah, keep going.
That?
No.
Further?
No, go ahead, never mind, keep going.
Forward or backwards?
Go back to where you are.
Now, come on, that has.
Are you looking for that paragraph of words? Between the two?
No, that chart that you have on top there. Yeah, we changed all of them.
Yeah. I understand Eclectic Motors might be leaving.
They have moved part of there.
To Little's?
To, to Little's now, but he's still planning on, they're still doing work here.
Oh, okay.
They haven't pulled out. Now, when I talked to him the other day, he didn't. Didn't need me to believe that they were gonna pull out.
Oh, completely, yeah.
And you think?
Yeah, the old Wintrae there across from Royal Farms, what's HB into, it's HB, is it HB Industry? I don't think that One Earth Peace, I don't think that's here anymore, I don't know whether that's still here.
He must have pulled this off from the website.
Uh, I'll go down.
Just a little crazy on me.
Yes, oh, there it is. It said on there, it was a blurb, I think it said the town's website. Yeah, New Windsor, oh.
No, source.
There you go.
July twenty twenty five, county New Windsor website, okay.
Now, we do have, uh, Paul's Park Animal Grooming, that's now in town.
Do I want to add them in?
It's not on the, I don't think it's on there, but.
Paul's Park Animal Grooming?
Yeah, P A W.
It's gonna come after Passion for Pets.
Is that what's in?
Where, where the, uh, crabs, where Mars' crabs.
P A, Paul's?
P A W.
L S? Or P A W?
Possibly, yes. And then park.
Park.
I wrote it down.
Okay. I'll call that home base as well.
That's brick and mortar.
Oh, brick and mortar.
Yeah, that's where Mars' Crab Shack used to be. Dog groomed, but you can't get groomed in New Windsor.
Sounds like you take a test of that.
Yeah.
Uh, do that backwards, so let's do this, hold on, back, I'm getting to my tab. That's gonna go up there. Okay, brick and mortar, I'm not worried about. They're gonna have to set that, uh, formatting, I'm not a formatter. Just have to remember to save it. Do that right now.
On the inventory and description, commercial, do we list the old E and N?
And eight parcels.
Yeah, I don't know.
Wait, when you ask a group?
Well, it doesn't really list.
It doesn't list any properties anyway, so.
Specific properties, yeah, okay.
We want to. Table fifteen. And I'm guessing this is also from. Our website is that, oh, that doesn't say, this is located in Carroll County, source, May twenty twenty five, okay.
The Quality Hill, Quality Hill Daycare, they're not longer.
Well, I mean, look at the front, that would work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Richard, yeah, Richard.
It said a May date on it?
Yeah, May twenty twenty five.
And that, yeah, that's, oh my.
It's just not updated.
Yeah, Richard Mars, they're not. New Windsor all, Odie's. DP Smilser, J C Printing.
Montreal.
He retired.
New Windsor Carryout?
It's still the old.
That's there, right, that's the only one, is that bad?
The New Windsor Liquors, I guess.
Yeah, there's New Windsor Carryout, yeah, there's liquor. Yeah, there's New Windsor Carryout, yeah, there's liquor.
Eleven's still there, Atlee House B and B, that's not there.
Best Pizza's gone, it's now Belisamos. Yeah, Best is gone.
Karen, yeah, Karen.
Deleting these people off, or?
I'm not sure why, why is this one here? Was, wasn't everything that was on the?
The other one would have been correct.
Should have been correct and.
Yeah, because I've.
Yeah.
This is, this is, um.
Even, Anova is gone.
Right, there's not much.
Yeah.
Are the ones that are, are the ones that are left here, like Hartslers and I guess?
Seven Eleven.
Seven Eleven, that name on the other list?
I don't know.
I didn't. Are all those, yeah, well, yeah, because that's what.
Yeah, they're all on the.
There's Hartslers.
New, New Windsor Town Businesses is table fourteen, what's supposed table fifteen supposed to be?
Now, on the, the latest.
New Windsor Community Planning Area.
Now, on the, what was printed, the last, he gave a, that had, this is listed as table sixteen, but this there, I guess we did. I mean, do we go, and go ahead and delete those? Yeah.
I, I, I think this, this whole table.
Isn't this table replaced by the one that's above it? Well, so one is, this says Community Planning Area, the other one says, it's a different area, but.
Yeah, now, this, on the last printout, it's a table sixteen, New Windsor Community Planning Area Commercially Zoned Properties.
And fif- fourteen is the same thing.
I would think they should match.
I would think so too. So fourteen is New Windsor Town Businesses.
Okay, and this is an inventory of commercial properties, but it's not, it's not like D V Smelsters is no longer.
Right, that's why I'm saying they should match, yeah.
But is it zoned?
Well, it's within the town, it's within the district, that's who it is.
So even though the business isn't in place, that property is still zoned, so that this is accurate?
I think so.
Yeah, it would still be accurate, because that, even though the property may not be called that, it shouldn't be an address.
Moved into one of the buildings, but then the zoning would.
So would we be better to put street addresses?
No. Why, why would we need to do that?
Yeah, people aren't gonna come to this to try to find commercial property to buy in New Windsor, I wouldn't think. It's not where they're gonna start. Yeah, because the New Windsor Inn is Frankie's. Do I want to change names for what these places are now? Like, change Best Pizza to Belisamos, change New Windsor Inn to Frankie's?
Good, so maybe the other chart should have a third column. With the.
Commercially zoned properties?
I don't know.
Could this chart be removed and just say that there is a, that most of the Village Center is zoned commercial? Or?
You know, why would, why would anybody be interested in going to the detail? We just, I mean, it's, they're more interested in knowing how it's zoned, as far as specific businesses, lots of.
What I have marked and, and we did the markup was, we changed everything to what they are now. Like, like we were saying, so some of these aren't even here anymore.
Both of, most of these are all in the Village Center, so could you just say that the Village, the zoning, Village Center, you know, accommodate commercial?
Have that in here at the beginning somewhere?
Yeah, we already have that. So this.
Yeah, so the town New Windsor has one exclusive commercial zoning, oh, neighbor, well, no, that's the.
I think we mentioned it somewhere in here.
Yes, the town has a variety of commercial uses already existing with the Village Centers zoning.
And that's what this whole.
Designation, yeah, the purpose of the Village Zone is to provide for a mix of. So could we more or less eliminate that?
I, I would like to.
Eliminate this table?
I would like to, I, I think it's redundant and incorrect.
So that means we got to renumber some tables, because.
The, the tables afterwards, yes.
So should I just, do I delete table fifteen or just put remove?
Why don't you, why don't you?
Highlight it?
Highlight it and put a little note above it that said, that says, uh, remove, put, put it right next to it.
I'm gonna go that and say.
Put remove with a question mark, and we're gonna stop right there, question.
Or correct, remove or correct.
And, um, this is where we'll start.
Save.
Next month.
I hit the save button.
Oh.
No, no, I want you to hit the save button, I want you to do a save as, did you already hit save?
I think I already hit the save button, at the top.
That's all right.
I just hit that.
Do, do a save as right now and, and, um, put today's date on it.
As, I guess go to the OneDrive, is that where you guys keep everything?
No, 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 don't do that, just save it on my desktop, just save that, just rename that, that document. Because I'm just pitching it back to Mark so he can incorporate this.
So we're gonna pick up.
On chapter ten, table fifteen. On October.
October twenty-seven. Oh, you can't do that.
Did that work?
Yeah, I just had a slash in there and they don't like slashes. I should know better, I could P, P it all the time. I called it the nine twenty-two version, so. It's on your desktop.
Yeah, good place to.
Okay, everybody has that mark where it was, so we can.
Say table sixteen or fifteen, fifteen?
Table fifteen, remove.
And then we can make a decision on what we really wanna do, whether to remove it.
Change it, remove it. Okay.
Okay, uh, anybody, other than the musical in the main, any other announcements?
So, I think I did have some, let's see. Oh, yeah, so also the fifth annual Franklin G. Schaefer Memorial Five K Run is October eighteenth. Um, they're, they're registering for the event now, and, um, you can find it on the web, or even off the town's web, um, webpage, if you're interested in, uh, walking and running that, that five K, and it's up in the web, it's there at the old Wakefield.
The hiking, walking trail.
Walking trail there, it's, it's, you know, we got, we got a lot of people that run it, and they're typically, the runners are done in less than fifteen minutes. And the walkers, uh, you know, take their time and walk through the trail, it's a real, it's a real nice morning. Uh, so if you're interested in that, and it's a, you know, fundraiser, so it's, it's a nice time.
And then, uh, the traveling Vietnam, traveling memorial wall, and it'll be over on. Coral Grounds. October from the ninth to the thirteenth. I think on the eighth, there's going to be a parade, uh, kind of like a procession of it coming into New Windsor. I think they're gonna have, uh, I think some ladder trucks with flags and probably escorts from various.
What date is that again?
Uh, that'll probably be on the eighth.
Yeah, that'll be the eighth, they weren't exactly sure what time, it's gonna be in the morning, it's coming from Mount Airy over to here, uh, that morning.
Uh, yeah, the cabin vault, on their website, uh, Facebook page, I think they have updates, they'll have updates on that. For, uh, you know, for the latest update on that. Are these dates, uh, still good with everybody for the twenty, October the twenty-seventh? And then, twenty-fourth, I guess when it's closer will.
Yeah, we're worried about that, yeah.
So the next plan meeting will be, uh, October twenty-seventh at six P M. Anybody, anything else, anybody have?
Claire, thank you for coming and hanging out with us, and it was a little bit painful going through that.
That's okay.
And thanks for your input.
And thanks for the maps.
Yes, that's the, the big, uh, so, uh.
Well, yeah, if there's, if there's like significant changes, or you wanna sit down with Javier, um, to go over some requests, make sure we get everything, just let us know.
I know he had asked about on this, the Hough property, whether a, a designation for that, um, you saw that in one of the emails. But I see it's, it's, that's something we can discuss.
The. For the Hough part, the Hough?
Yeah, and the designation, so. Okay, uh, here, motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second right here.
Second of day, where's everybody, all those in favor signify, say an aye.
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 So moved, thank you, everybody.
Thank you all.